All right, meeting of the Newbury Live Report of Trustees. Who will take attendance?
Terry, who does?
Alexander Berg.
Melissa Mashburn.
Richard Poseri and Director.
Taylor.
So, we don't see there literally. Perfect time, perfect time. All you've got to do is just say your name and say it in person, and that's it.
Hi Gilson.
Okay, we were literally just doing that. Okay. Now, do we have minutes from?
Yeah, I just thought you had a couple of hours.
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
I didn't print that.
Thanks. Have a chance to look at it?
Move acceptance?
Second.
Second. Okay, here we go. Minutes. The running three for what?
I don't have a chance to look through it. Or we just?
Yep, why don't you go to look at it?
Yes, absolutely.
We go ahead.
So, we had some tasks here, the fire line was very difficult. There were a few issues that they found, but they're working through it all. Most of which Marty had fixed, we're waiting on our company to fix last year. I don't know, right? We're having an issue with this projector system. IT came out. We're hoping it's fixed. So, there's a core, there's two ports that could go on to be made a support issue. So, we would put two in another port. So far, not on wood, no issues. If there's an issue, we'll have to look at replacing it, which is something we'll be about next. Maybe there's anyway, but preferably not now. But so he's fixed it for now, we'll see. So, Corey's back, she was with our temp and now she is our permanent part-time User Services Associate. We'll see her quilt around, we'll be very excited to have her back. Catherine and I went and interviewed, we had four interviews. We found a candidate that we really liked. He's going to start on the first Tuesday of June. And he'll be our new Service Department Library Consultant, so we're really excited to open him. The new town that made third negotiations, it will be meeting in that soon.
I don't know, he will need a win?
Oh, he'll be here on June 4th.
Okay.
Gil is back, it's so popular still. We took a pause for the election, so we added one of them in a series. So, it'll move into our first one in June now. Votes to go for Shouse here, and it was huge. We had 67 people come through last, four votes, 67 people. I love votes, I got to hold the vote, it was great. So, that was a huge hit. Yeah, the kids were so very, very cute. Town meeting was held, the one that involved our parents passed. And then the Friends Plant Sale for Saturday was here, it was huge. I just heard that we made a ton of money more than last year, so. Yes.
It was pretty clean out.
It was. Yeah, it was bumping, and it wasn't even just the plant sale, the raffle went really well. People were donating for donuts. And people were coming into the library, so I was at the desk, and we're showing our friends to the library. People were coming in, and we went to have a break, because I paid for my own pay. So, it went very, very good.
Yeah, I just saw Pam was here, and she said that it was better than last year. Last year was the best year that ever happened.
Exactly. And that was with less plants than last year, so.
Well, because the price didn't stay the same since.
Price didn't stay the same, it was the raffle.
Raffle always did.
I would say the raffle did better than the plant sales here, or better than last year, which is why, even though it was less likes. Used to do that for last year.
Pick up mine, give us a second.
Please do. She'll say it on the worthy test, because someday she'll know that that's high.
Okay, I want her to find that when she comes.
Yeah, because that's how it went, we're trying to log.
Excellent. And the new person that's coming, obviously he has experience?
Well, yes, so he's currently working, he lives in North Carolina and is moving up here. He and she is another, and he's been working in a local library out there. And he's got a lot of library experience, he also has some history experience. So, we're hoping that they have an interesting role to play.
Should you like?
Yes, should you like?
Where is he?
Hi, I don't know off the top of my head. He's very sweet, we spent about an hour chatting with him. Close your eyes, or we'll talk.
We will use our call on Monday before the end of this meeting here.
Yeah, we're on track to do some, so. No, and I have a few like bonus slides if they to get us through for whatever reason it's slow down, but I think we'll be okay. That's about it. Stats look good for the most part, pretty on par with the spring seasons.
I was looking at, just quickly looking at Candy. I mean, 884 from, it was 424 last year?
Yeah, we've done more marketing work. Yeah, and also, yeah, I think Candy's kind of growing, and at least definitely for like Oscars and Globes. They started pulling those things onto there, especially for the documentaries, and it's really popular.
That kind of turned out that way.
Right? Yeah, very exciting.
And then all of the social media kinds of things were all going in that direction too.
Definitely. It's not exclusive to the Yankees right now.
Good. Very good. Let's see, new business. I guess, first thing we should probably, we want to just take our office, reflection of the office. We do that once a year, and we have two positions, the chair and the secretary. So, anybody that would like to?
You can.
Go party.
Would you please continue in the chair?
I nominate Dick Poseri. I sent that on the chair.
Bravo. I don't yet.
I will be pleased.
If I nominate, or somebody could nominate.
Mr. Raven, he's a transcriber, I don't know if he would.
Thank you, Ray, thank you.
It's only fair.
And you saw how he's been doing.
Oh, yeah. I will try to be terse.
And that's.
Don't want my characters.
And if you can, if you can choose not to be.
Hey, yeah.
Go for it. Expand it.
You have creative voice.
Absolutely.
Very much, the secretary's purview.
And I think as a secretary also, you take all the documents, whatever's been handed out tonight. And that then becomes something you file with the secretary, that gets filed.
I have it filed, I don't know.
I think it has to be filed, at least accessible online of.
Oh, I, that's neat, so yeah.
You do that, okay.
As soon as you finish writing the.
Raff?
Yes, I will upload the ones that were approved. And then each time around, I'll do that, so.
Okay, I'm gonna move that like timely.
Yeah.
Again, now, what am I?
That one's last of the time.
Yeah, but it comes down on you.
Well, the time that has to be done in time, but it's a, it's a hassle.
I think if you look at some of the other town organizations, you'll find that minutes are a black card.
Yeah, yeah, we're doing fine on minutes.
Our most talented minute hawk has passed away, so.
Oh, right, 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 yeah. But I'm sure others.
Full surface?
Yeah. Okay, so that elections of the offices is done until next year?
Done.
Okay. All right, the commemorating World Committee members, the, I got a request from Tracy who reached out. The God who loved wants to donate a lilac bush in memory of Cheryl McGough. And I'm planning on being. And I guess we have to pull it on, it's sort of her in favor. Cheryl was, not only was she remembered the God, but she was also a trustee, she was on the building committee also for the library. She was a very active member in the genealogy department, so she's had roots with us. So, kind of like, you know, I don't know, she must have been mid-sixties, mid-sixties I would think, because she was kind of like a week long. Building committee.
It's all the idea.
Yeah. And I'm saying to do it, coordinate with James, and put it between the two windows in one.
So, the God of coordinating doing it?
Yeah, they're doing it, the God of coordinating is doing it.
And the leech field out there?
The leeching field is actually under the.
Oh, so this is clear?
This should be clear.
Where's the D box?
The D box was in the close by the grass, I haven't seen it in years. And that's why they need to coordinate with James.
Yes, yes.
Can we put a road plan?
They're handling it, so let's see what they do.
Yeah, they had just said, it was quite a lilac in front of the library, and we're walking in front of the metro. Lilacs need to look here, and do all the various processes in that location. It would be planted if given permission, followed by.
I thought the D box was accessible out here, it's just in the grass just before, as you walk down the block. But I think the leeching field itself is actually in the, actually accessible. We need to verify it. I was on that, everybody can tell me something.
It's been a little while.
Yes.
I didn't say. Okay. Okay, please, thank you. All right. And then approval of the summer hours, what are we doing?
Yeah, so it's just, it's the, yeah, just taking my Saturdays, Tuesdays, and Fridays would be the same. So, we're actually after 35 hours, and we're just doing that through, so Labor Day, that's the end of the race, it's a little. Not much should not still be spent.
The Saturday hours will be as they have been, what, 10 to 2?
Taking the way. Yeah, that's what we've been doing. Yes, no worries, so it would start this weekend, would be the first Saturday off going through.
Oh, right.
This is the last Saturday?
Saturday, the last Saturday was going before it.
Oh, okay.
That's what I have some minutes that we left for comparing.
So, hours is stable, but there's no term, there's no concern about adequate number of hours?
Nope, no, maybe when they change their hours.
When they change the hours.
They now have 35 hours per week.
So, what they would do, they would adjust their time here in order to cover the Saturday hour.
So, now we'll be totally.
So, now we'll be totally, they did 35 hours during the week, so.
Okay.
All right, so is there a motion to change the hours for?
I'll make a motion to adjust the hours.
Second?
Second.
Second on the favor, okay, the hours change this. And then we have directors' contract, which. It's the same contract that we've used, everybody, and it slipped through the cracks again. That wasn't paying attention, I guess, and we didn't get it done at the time when Amy was hired. So, the things that would change in there obviously would be the starting date, what is the actual starting date?
March 5th.
March 5th. Write that in, and I will type this one in.
In four, and there's another one.
Oh, right, and the, yeah, the restriction on the cola, when Erin got hired, I guess, assuming what was in place at that time. Her start date was May 1st, and she was not entitled to the cola, it went into effect on July 1st. That just got clarified through the town, how they, that she will be entitled to the cola. So, I will take that out. And then in paragraph eight, is the date in there?
Fourth.
March 5th. And then, the way the contract is written, it's a contract for a year, it automatically renews, so, for another year. And if for any reason there was to be any termination of the contract, is, I think, a 60-day notice that we have to provide. But again, as I said, it's the same contract that we've been using for the past two directors at least of the last two.
And just to wrap a little bit to the contract, the performance reviews, do you just do one a year, or do you do a day one?
That's so good, I just. I think I'm still ready to get ready to do errands.
Okay. It's a year.
The old one, yeah, okay, but let's keep it the old one.
That's fair.
Maybe she'll come back and I'll do it. Like, I think, yeah, she's just got off her job in New York.
Oh, really? I have friends in New York who are really active in the library, so.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, she wanted to do something, and then was available, so she should have done it by the time, so it's trying to be.
Okay, so under compensation.
Yeah.
Sentence beginning additionally. Strike April 2024, insert March 5, 2024.
Yeah.
No other change within that except?
Remove the reference to the code.
Totally.
Yes.
So, strike?
Strike, unless we want to put language in that says, yeah. Think it's the strike.
Shall qualify?
Yeah, that makes it easier.
Yes.
That is like the first part, yes. The library director will qualify for July 1, 2024.
Yeah, just right.
And shall receive any control.
Better keep it low.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, in my fuzzy mind. A change again, start date, 35, 24, till the end of FY25.
Is the order renewal as of the date that she starts?
For?
Yes. Later.
Uh, fiscal?
It's for, for the, so it would be, and I guess, we'll be dating it.
Backdating.
Backdating, yes.
Four. No, sixteen, it's a 16-month agreement to begin with.
Right.
And then, strikes are renewable, is it the beginning of FY25?
That's correct.
So, no other changes necessarily within that?
No.
Paragraphally, except for the start date.
Yep.
Finally, swallowing of getting there.
Listen, that's our all aspect.
Well, that's cool, now, do we vote on it provisionally?
Yes, with the corrections that have just been made.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that will be done, and we'll sign it, and move on from there, make sure it's distributed to all the appropriate. The equipment that we're managing.
So, I'm going to move the board accept.
Okay.
I'm in it.
Okay. May the secretary go on my favor?
Aye, okay, good. Excellent.
Any other business?
We missed one, I don't know if yours will include what's your favorite.
Oh, okay, oh, yes, yes, yes.
What you got?
It was like, what?
You want to talk about?
I like this one too.
I just have a, two thoughts. One is Melissa Ronald Everett's rock.
Oh, right.
We should turn attention to that here. I think the time feel. Secondly, we were offered, three years ago, the Newbury spinning wheel. From the treasurer at the historical commission, Lon Hype Meister, who purchased it when the historic Damon estate was auctioned in June of 2018. And now, we need to make a provision, whether we want the thing, so far.
I will give an opinion on it.
Please.
It's one of those things that local history rooms get kind of confused for exams or archives, and we just don't have the space or really ability to showcase something like that. I mean, we're not having it all, it's to, you know, the space that we have to show that off. So, that kind of concerns me.
Do we want to consider? Discussing with Museum of World Memory, this whole society, the way I'm in.
Yeah, talked about.
Yeah, it's always like something more that will prove them, like physical mysteries like that.
Yes.
Because then you have dozens that are going to be there to interpret it.
Yeah.
And you know.
I tell you, Bethany's actually on a push to get more new doses.
I mean, you definitely won't tell me that.
I know, I'm a senior dose.
All right, I should have known.
By senior, I mean oldest. Not most capable, I falls to you.
I think that would be a great place to start that, and I just think that something like that would be better. One, it'd get preserved better, because we, I'm knowing how we would preserve this spinning wheel. We did use our materials.
You've never seen the children's room?
Yeah, well, yeah, that would go really well.
That would as well.
We could act as.
The rug, we talked about hanging.
Yes.
And that we're not displaying, and I'm imagining that the time we received.
I was saying, we're just waiting for the quilt to come up in the.
Yeah, 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 exactly, yeah, yeah. And we had talked about an area out front near with the table that's out there, I think, in reality, when we first started.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's kind of, it's rolled up in the local history, you've already seen it. And we said, we'll put it someplace where it's going to be secure, and it's actually stayed here for a year and a half, so it's good. So, I think.
I think it's.
I think that's right.
I don't, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, because I thought, and then it's a safe way to hang it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
That makes sense. I have an in on if we need.
We have, we know.
Yes, that too, and that's definitely.
Come in and look at it. That was first gifted us from the Museum of Touchdown Services over and over.
Yeah.
Not finding the name yet, but of course, it'd be in the middle of the night, but anyway. Camille Breeze came over, looked at it, and the first recommendation was take it off the board. Take it off the oak piece on which it was hanging while it was in the Everett's house. Avoid stress and strain on the fabric. And restoration of the fabric, we weren't sure, still aren't sure, what the provenance, we knew where it came from. Everett's mother made that along with other rugs, which are in, well, Delfer. System. So, we did get a, this is getting scattered, but we did get a photograph of the family farm, which was up here. Right bang in the middle of the intersection with I-95. You may have that picture somewhere in the, so we need to suscitate that and get it ready to move.
Yeah, if we have an issue with the, if we can find a safe way for the rug to hang in placework, not a problem. But this spinning wheel, it just don't make weird.
No, air hanging is the most we could do, we have that airplane out there.
Yeah.
All that kind of.
I love that idea.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Yeah, we can chat with the.
Let's do it, see what the reactions is. I think the rug is in more than.
Yes, that's something we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess the broader question is, the local history stuff is starting to get some momentum to it with Katie. I guess if this fellow has an interest in this.
I think so, and if not, it's something that.
You want to build on that.
Yep, but so, the roundtable, history roundtable, no one showed it on our last, on which Saturday, we were angry at the place, so.
I'm.
And there was a lot going on, but we're going to take a break, take a break for the summer, and then we are bringing it back because it was popular, so.
Oh, absolutely.
And again, hopefully, he does have a lot of it, so he's doing a lot of work with history, I hope he can.
Does he have any connection to the movement at all?
But he's from one of the original 13 colleges. And if someone who's kind of interested in history is a very pleased to meet.
No, no, absolutely.
Oh, I think, I thought that my parents are from North Carolina. Yes.
Raleigh and Benson. Benson is a sample of Raleigh and home of the Gospel Saint in the old day, which is still televised, I believe. Yes. In Cape Girardeau.
Oh, it's kind of like.
No, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry about that, Charlie.
Oh, God.
Paulson.
No, I know what it is, the genealogy group that gets to give, is that always on Saturday?
That's, that's.
The roundtable? Yes.
It was, Katie was running there.
Yeah. Which is why we're.
My wife and I, Katie and Deanna Sullivan were usually there, other people were periodically coming in. Deanna Sullivan's a good resource.
Yes, yeah, she's on my list.
For genealogy, and she's got a passion for it.
But it has been, it's been Saturdays, so it's getting to go where, like, we play us sleep at Saturdays, unless we feel that Saturdays are not working, such we can't get a full event, and then we'll, we'll transition to another day to test it out. But since we were getting a pretty small dedicated group on Saturdays, we wanted to see what that, hopefully, he has a lot of.
Makes sense.
Yeah. All right, I guess, is there anything else?
Oh, I have the NBLC membership, it's my, it's my personal, and it's very. Pretty much all the same, the nearest thing is, we are going to be, our membership is like being going up. It will be a mandatory 1% increase every year now, with the cap still 5%, I don't feel that we're going to do 5%. Where we are, but they're doing a mandatory 1%, because it's help, kind of that, just same percentage for the project. So, I'm going to work on that. Otherwise, it's a pretty big head. Otherwise, it's a pretty big of that.
And that budget, as you mentioned, in town meeting, the budget got approved, it was never from that.
Can you tell?
The roof replacement was approved, and the HVAC.
Yeah.
They did a great job of explaining.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, thanks for saying, yeah, it was really impressive. Yeah, I tried to remember, it's like a habit, you were pushback, no. You did incredible, I was very pushback.
Exactly.
You were so very happy to back of other things, so.
It was diffused it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Quiet, write down.
Very important, his driving.
That'd be a good job.
Cut his estimates.
Yeah.
You'd kind of get a bid, and so you'd have a budget.
Exactly.
Okay, so we get estimates, the professionals provide those. James wasn't pulling numbers out of the sky.
Yeah, but yeah, he's obviously the playground is public law, which is great because our agents are fantastic. He could love, yeah, he has that down.
Fully accessible?
I believe so, yeah, I, from what I can tell, I truly don't know a lot.
Is there a money going through?
Yes.
Any feedback on our request for proposals on the generator?
I think the deadline is, what, thirtieth for proposals to be received. So I'm gonna, have you heard from James?
Not really.
I'm gonna bug him.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna bug him.
Yeah, yeah, he stopped, I agree, clearly, but we were talking about like immediate needs that were happening.
Just to have periodically, as you did too, you know, have him come in and just kind of go off of where we're at with a lot of the capital stuff, the facilities. Again, he's responsible for the building. If you get a problem with anything, contact him.
Oh, I haven't.
Okay. All right, no, that's, that's fine.
He's the favorite of our bunch here.
That's what his, you know, became the responsibility, before him, it was the building inspector who was the facilities manager. When he left, it shifted as James, and he's really stepped in and, you know.
It's the home of the pack when we had the issue with.
Okay.
And all that stuff done, our line is fixed.
Okay. Good. And you get the information from Fred already?
Yes, yes, I did, I did change it, surprisingly, I lowered the temperature. It doesn't feel like you can, I'm going to do it again, but I now have access to logging into the HAC.
Because I actually felt like I got a blast up here when I was standing out in the lobby.
I will call him tomorrow and have you walk me through it again to make sure I haven't missed it, however.
No, sure.
Yeah, he has given the access.
Okay, good. So she can control heating and lighting.
It is a wide system.
It's all computerized.
It is a wide system. I remember it focusing many, many people, so it was comfortable anywhere.
Really, you're starting to control. Fred is saying that as I'm before you, I'm going to come down, come come, and he'll sit down with me and walk me through the minutia, and I am looking forward to that. It's something that used to be for going to your back.
Have you heard?
Uh, a little bit, yeah.
My question, now that this woman, this lady calls up and would it ever came out of the wood?
That's, yeah, that's something we have to pursue.
And I have this far time to create the, the background, the fields.
Okay.
So I had talked to him about plant sale, to make sure that the membership that we were having would buy a film.
And they didn't run anything that day.
Uh, no, they had practice, but he had said that if kids get dropped off, they won't be able to park those.
Okay, because we run into that problem.
One year, yeah.
It was insane.
Yeah, so I now have the right contact information, so if you don't want.
So that's something we need to follow up on, I don't know why it was being charged to us.
So is it, is it still being charged to us, or like no one?
Well, I don't know if they've done it.
Wait, I don't think they've done it.
They haven't, probably haven't.
Not that I see it.
Okay.
But that's something we do want to clarify.
Yeah. That's a, a big question.
Yeah.
And not for nothing, in addition to the water, the electricity article.
Yeah.
The light. Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's lights on or not.
But do they, wasn't there a dispute about neighbors saying we don't want the lights, and then they weren't using it with the light?
Yeah.
Also, I don't know if those like.
One thing in time.
Yeah, I hope that there is a meter of.
I don't think there.
Because I hope it's a separate.
Separate.
Yeah, as someone, I don't think we have any way to turn on or off the lights, so I'm guessing that we don't have access to that, which makes me think it's a separate. And I haven't noticed any fluctuations on that stuff.
Yeah, which I hope it's, another thought. The town now is a certified green community.
Mm-hmm.
Which now means we are eligible for grants from the state and others for green initiatives. One of the things that probably, in my mind, I'd like to, first, I'd like to talk to James, where he's at the HVAC of this system. Is there something, if it's still in the design phase, that we can piggyback and look for a means of getting some of the green money from the state to fund it, as opposed to getting the full hundred and seventy-five thousand out of the town? And then, what can we do to do more sustainable stuff?
I have one of those.
Yeah?
I love that.
That's, you know, that's real.
We can finish with that.
Yeah, one of my things is the lighting in the main line. A lot of times, we don't need the lights. It's enough natural light coming in. And if, I don't know if the college, but we did, we built, I met zero building, all of the classrooms on the southern side of the building, it's set up and set away. When the sun hit a certain beam in the windows, it sent enough light into the room, the lights went out, and the sun dissipated, the lights went back on. So it was a sense, it wasn't a motion sensor, it was some light trip. So those kinds of things, even motion sensors in here, after everybody goes, and ten minutes after everybody's out of here, if they forgot to shut the lights, all the lights go off.
Yeah, I think we have a timer for lights overnight right here, but these stay on all day, even when they're, they're supposed to.
It'd be nice if they went on when somebody came in to look at the bushes, and then went out when they left, and so, those are the kinds of things I'm thinking, you know. Bigger things you could be doing, you could be doing geothermal values and all that.
Sure, very little like that. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's probably two or five into the process that we'd be thinking about that, it's interesting. I reason that sometimes, solar panels after they, they do the roof.
Yeah, it depends on how many, and there's several, we're actually, one of the things that came up today in the membership meetings, of libraries where, I mean, when we get that video first, which you make, and so it would actually pass through. Apparently, there is that side of the thing that I thought about, so.
No, it's, and then there's, we were talking about doing, you know, to get a green community, also Ebsco, they provide rent money for solar panels. They can do something, even out on the parking lot with.
Green.
I'm having one of those ones.
Testing. Testing equipment?
No, just putting up panels out in the, in the parking lot. It's part of the parking, just drive underneath this thing. This housing, a new report that hasn't just gone roof one.
Yeah.
You know, and there's a restaurant, I don't know if you went through the team, in Vamp's, I think they had it, and Vamp's. Flawless.
They have a cost of time.
Yeah. So, and actually, we had it with the college, the old walkways. We took it in such place where the snow slides off, if it's not falling.
That is, that's.
Which was actually, not, thought, it was one of the biggest issues with the solar panels on the roof of the building.
Slides off.
And when it slid off, everybody who was on the third floor thought that the elephants were walking on the roof.
Right, we had that issue with Stone and General.
Yeah. Yeah, and then if they put a metal roof on this, that's going to slide off, and it's going to be louder when it slides. So, just a broader discussion, so maybe someday we sit down with Martha and we talk to her about green energy and how we can do. Any feedback on the EV plugin?
I forgot.
Fred was handling that.
Yeah, he didn't say anything about that, he walked through the building from the HAC stuff and showed me where everything was, I believe that they thought it shouldn't be in the station.
Okay, so the conversation with James, this is probably something we want to talk about too. I'll see if I can send something out in the next week or so. I guess that's it, unless anybody else has anything else.
Next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting, yes. You'll be on vacation then? Oh, June, no.
I'm not June, but June, I think it's a very.
Good.
Yeah.
We didn't have too many snow days in Seattle, so that's, that's great. Tuesday still works for everybody?
Absolutely.
Four thirty?
Sure. I have the four thirty three.
And which June date did we pick?
Uh, are we trying to do the second or?
Whatever, it's always kind of, whatever everybody's schedule allows. What's the second? The second Tuesday?
The second Tuesday, I think.
Whatever.
The eleventh or the eighteenth.
So your preference?
The eighteenth gives us four weeks, gives us a, a month between.
Okay, let's do that, let's go with the eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yeah.